The meeting, Councilor Lafranboise, Councilor Pate.
Moved by Councilor Lafranboise and seconded by Councilor Pate. Be it resolved that the council for the corporation of the municipality of St. Charles hereby opens a special meeting of council at six P M. on September twenty five, twenty twenty five.
All those in favor? Carry. Okay, all members of council are present. We would like to begin by acknowledging that we are in Robinson Huron Treaty territory, and the land on which we gather is the traditional territory of the Etikvixning Anishnabek. We also wish to recognize our neighboring community of Dokeys First Nation. While we meet today, we would like to take a moment to acknowledge the importance of the lands we each call home. We do this to reaffirm our commitment and responsibility in improving relationship between nations and to improving our own understanding of local indigenous people and their culture. Can I have a mover and a seconder to adopt the agenda? Councilor Loftus, Councilor Deschamps?
Moved by Councilor Loftus and seconded by Councilor Deschamps. Be it resolved that the agenda for the special meeting of council held September twenty five, twenty twenty five be adopted as presented.
All those in favor? Carry. Discourse of peculiar interest, Councilor Lafranboise.
None your worship.
Councilor Loftus?
None your worship.
Councilor Pate?
None your worship.
Councilor Deschamps?
None your worship.
And none for myself. Um, anybody have announcements? Raise your hands. None? Okay. Uh, today, uh, we have, okay, no, it's a, we have a report from E X P, change order, uh, King and Casimir, and prepared by Denis. Is this, do you have a report? It says report.
Yeah, the report was included with the agenda.
You want something you wanted to add before we give the floor?
No, basically, it just to like quote and know what you're seeing is it's the copy of the email that you, uh, after I sent you for the, um, the, uh, the changes in cost and your reply was included in the report to council and also a slight update on the project. And, uh, we are probably going to give direction to include that extension at Casimir and King, the nineteen hundred dollar, uh, so extension at that intersection.
Um, go to the north side.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. All right. Well, it's just when we were going over the, the documents, we had just a few questions. And, uh, essentially, uh, the, the fact that the number of streets were reduced, um, the hours, uh, applied to each employee changed substantially, some of them. And, uh, how come it, it all ends up that where we've reduced it by maybe thirty percent of the roads, but the, we're still only reducing by, uh, the, the, the forty percent for the global project. So that's more or less, but I'm gonna let, uh, each counselor ask their questions.
Well, I think, uh, Denis asked the questions that, uh, were, um, we wanted answers about the five percent, uh, increase in the tender, like it's, it, it stated in your, the main tender in July, I think, twenty twenty three, that it wouldn't increase, more than five percent. And like they were explained, uh, your hourly base changed and, um, of course, the, the hours and stuff. Just wondering, how are you able to do that if it's already written in small letters? You know, the five percent should not be more than, it not, should not be more than five percent.
Yeah.
Your increase. And as stated, uh, it's more, it's almost forty percent, right? The hourly rates?
Yeah, if you can shed some light and help.
Yeah, absolutely. So, uh, I sent over to Denis, uh, this morning, uh, well, I mean, this afternoon, I guess, uh, the latest, uh, proposal iteration, uh, in July. So, uh, those, those rates in there were, uh, I believe from my rate, uh, and that was one of the ones that was brought forward. So I believe in it and it was included, uh, was a hundred and thirty at the time. So that was in, uh, twenty twenty three, so five percent increase, uh, for two years, we're at close to a hundred and forty five. So it's a slight, uh, increase from what I provided on that compares to the five percent from the July twelfth one. However, like, uh, so with the July twelfth one, we, we provided the design, uh, fees and, uh, C N inspection. At the time of the submission, we only moved forward with this, uh, the, the design portion of it. So that's all that was kind of approved at the time. And also like the, the C A and inspection hours were based off of the original, uh, proposal that was submitted. So basically, the original proposal you guys had, the R F P had, I believe it was eighteen hundred hours for inspection total. So we took that eighteen hundred and we split it amongst the three different sections, because there is, uh, uh, three different scopes, one for Lake Road, one for the east side, and one for the west side. So basically, we took six hundred and, uh, applied that hours to each, each inspection and, uh, C A section. So basically, the C N inspection that we provided with our, uh, proposal was based off of those hours. Deep Construction submitted their construction schedule for the, uh, work they proposed for, uh, all the work that they're doing, what they bid on for, uh, the project we posted. So we took that schedule and we broke down the hours based off of that for our two, uh, contract change orders. So based off of the, the schedule we provided, uh, you know, we didn't want to hit you guys with a huge number. That's why we decided to go, uh, closer to sixty percent inspection onsite, uh, because we figured that would be the minimum where we'd be able to provide sufficient oversight and, uh, try to reduce the cost a little bit for you guys. So that's kind of why we came back with the numbers we did for the, the contract change orders.
Okay, did that answer your questions, Councilor Deschamps, uh, Lafranboise?
It does, but it's still, for me, it's on paper, so your amount should not go higher than five percent. The rate, right? Like, i- it stated in black and white. I'm just, and especially like the change over of all, um, the titles, like it's, everything has changed in your document too, right?
Uh, I, I think one of the factors is that at one point it was, the most hours were coming from, is it Richie or Ricky?
Richie.
Richie?
Yep.
And his rate was lower. And now that his, his hours are basically gone and they've been absorbed by, uh, positions with a higher value. So that, that's, that's one of the reasons why it seems like the six hundred was at a lower rate, now we were absorbing it more in the upper echelons. Yeah. Yeah.
Uh, yeah, so I mean, at the time we submitted the proposal, like these are the staff that we were proposing to have available. We didn't get anything back on, you know, securing the, the C A inspection. So we, we have those staff busy now with other projects. So right now, we, we have the staff that we have available that we proposed on the, the contract change order.
So. Yeah.
That's for myself.
Okay, Councilor Loftus?
Yeah, I had the same questions. I'm just wondering like overall, because, um, it's just the, because somebody has an increase in pay, um, I don't think that the municipality should be absorbing that increase in their pay, you know what I mean? Like, uh, we were quoted a price for the job and I just have a feeling that at the end of the day, after this project is done, we're going to be over and above what we stated we were willing to pay as council and as the, for the municipalities, so.
Okay. And that, your, uh, so no, okay. Councilor Pate?
Yeah, the, the staff changing, I, I'm not quite sure how that, uh, like, maybe, uh, the tender or the, uh, proposal was put out and that's what was approved. Whether staffing changes, I, I understand that, that's why a change order comes from it. But that shouldn't fall on the, uh, you know, who, who is getting the contract signed? Like, you know what I mean? Like, it, it's falling on, on the municipality, uh, for staffing deficiencies or, uh, issues of staffing. And, uh, I feel like the, you know, there, yes, there, there can be the, the five percent increases and such and such. But the, the shuffle of, uh, roles is what really stood out, because it's like all the role, a lot of, majority of the roles are different. Like, it's like nobody is in the same role as what it was in the original proposal. Um, everybody's kind of moved up into different roles, it seems, and, uh, it, it just really brought a lot of questions, right? So that's where we're going with that. And, I mean, it, it's, like, uh, unfortunately, we already seen the, the one, uh, issue. Uh, the oversight was, uh, corrected already, I, I think it was, the, uh, the Casimir, the, the initial start of the project, the storm drain, uh, elevations and stuff. So dropping a, an increase in costs and then the, uh, de- decrease in oversight, uh, because it's going from, you know, potential a hundred percent to sixty percent. It really begs the question, when there was a issue that it could have been catastrophic, it really, if that would have been caught early on and, and my, my thoughts, because if that just continued from there, it would have just compounded, right? So, um, yeah, the, I don't know, it's, it's a tough pill to swallow, because it, everything was laid out two years ago and that's what we were going with. And now we're here and, uh, a change order comes forth for quite a substantial change. So it's, it's not like, uh, uh, you know, a five percent or something, it's, it's quite a substantial change. That's, that's why council has come forth today to discuss this, so. Um, as far as the change order for at the end of Casimir, I think that's, that's, uh, beneficial in the long run for us to go with that. So I, I don't, I don't know if there's much more we want to discuss about that, but yeah.
For the north, uh, you mean the pipe going north?
Yeah, the pipe going north, yeah, yeah, so.
So the, uh, pipe going north, you're talking about the sanitary service for the development?
Yep.
Yeah, so that was already included in the tender, so it's provisional in the, the tender. So that's already included, it's just a provisional item in the tender. So it's, uh, the amount that was approved overall.
Okay.
That's already included in that total cost. So, yeah.
And then?
And then, sorry, go ahead.
Uh, no, so then the road beyond that, right now, uh, just for, uh, you know, making sure we're on the same page, the ownership of that is still, I think, on the landowners in that area? Or the road's not assumed?
The, the roads are, are the land?
Oh, yes.
Is owned by the municipality.
The road, yeah, that's right.
There is no road per se.
Yeah, yeah. And that's where, uh, yeah, and I, I know the communication right now is pretty good for moving forward with that project. So I think we'll, we'll probably leave it at that for now, because otherwise, if we want to add to it, yeah.
That would be afterwards, once everything else has been approved.
But, uh, no, thank you, uh, yeah, I think the only, the only thing is that, you know, like we, we've talked about a couple times on it, just the, the change, the overall changes that have happened, so, yeah.
Councilor Deschamps?
Yeah, just to reiterate what, uh, other counselors already said, like, like I work in construction, I'm a project manager, well, not a project manager, but I'm in, in supervision team and I'm involved in a lot of change orders and C C Ns, F W Is. For me, uh, when you understand that there, there's a cost increases on wages, like you stated in your contract, five percent, uh, so, for applying it over the two years, that's, that's, uh, usually the only, that the only thing that for us there was not known was the start date. But as far as changing where the hours were allotted to and with the positions of those workers or for shortages, that worker shortages or staffing shortages, that doesn't fall in municipality, that's still, that, that's, uh, I don't know how to say it. For example, if I get a job with two apprentices and two journey persons and my apprentices are both in street school, I still got to finish the job, I can't go to the client and say, I paid it to make money with two apprentices, they're going in school, not got to get journeyman to finish the job. That's not, that's not, it's probably, I apologize. If, unless you have a justification for it other than that, but, uh.
So like we, we never got approval for C N inspection, like we still haven't gotten approval for C N inspection. So like, as, like, we submitted this proposal, uh, you know, several years ago now, we never got approval for C N inspection, even still. So. Like, we, we put this proposal forward, we got approval on design, but we never got approval for C N inspection, even still. So.
By the tender process, you were chosen at those rates given, right?
Can you say that again?
Like for the C A inspection, when you went through the process for selection?
Okay.
That was, that was all knowledge to us, like those are the rates that we're applying.
But we, we provided a fee for the design work and then we provided a provisional for the C A inspection. So we got approval on the original design work, but there was never approval on the provisional C A and inspection of work. So what was awarded to us was only the design work since the beginning.
It was, that was what was tendered, uh, that, that was what was awarded.
Yeah.
But we still had, I guess, still, we still had your pull for both, right? That helped us in selecting you as our successful bidder. And the second thing, like just to put in, like percentages, so everyone can understand. Uh, so the, the amount that we're paying right now is eighty-five percent of the original, uh, estimate, right? So we're fifty, fifteen percent less, but this is for sixty percent of the work. Because we're looking for sixty percent coverage on the side of a hundred, so we're paying eighty-five percent of what the original was for sixty percent of the work got back. So to me, it's just that the numbers don't add up.
I mean, uh, so the original, like, C N inspection was based off the hours that was provided to us. So we did, we provided a rate and we used the hours you guys provided. So I mean, like, at the end of the day, we can provide, like, the same amount of hours, it's just if we go over those hours and it's, it's going to be a change order like we would submit for. So if, uh, if council wants, I can adjust the change order to provide the same amount of hours as the previous one. It's just if we go over those hours, then, then we would submit a additional change order, because those are the numbers that were provided to us. So what we provided with, uh, the current change order is the projection based off of deep constructions, uh, construction schedule.
Yeah, it was a forty percent reduction in hours, but the, the cost was only a fifteen percent reduction, is what, is what I'm saying. Like, it doesn't, like.
If I could add also, there's also the, in addition to that, the reduced, uh, number of road, which adds, like, compounds the fact, the, 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 what, and that's the, the crux of where we see the, we're having difficulty reconciling everything.
Hmm.
Because if they would have went down proportionately, like thirty percent reduction in hours, thirty percent reduction in cost, or, or even something a little closer, it's, it's either five percent over two years, like a twenty-five, but going down forty percent in services and only fifteen percent in cost, and there's a, a gap there.
Yeah, so I mean, uh, Saint Joseph, uh, Casimir, King Street, they're all the ones that have storms, who are all the buried infrastructure. Notre Dame has a little bit, but most of it's open ditch, Saint Anne, open ditch, Shevilleville, uh, open ditch. Uh, like, the remaining sections of roadway are just kind of granular, like strip excavated granular, uh, backfill compact compares to the ones that we're doing, it's all buried infrastructure, uh, reconstruct, additional, additional infrastructure on them. So if you look at, uh, the roads in total, it's not, uh, indicative of what's required for the inspection, because there's a lot more going into, uh, the roadways with the additional buried infrastructure.
The only other thing was, uh, I'm on your question, although neither of you had asked. Um, I'd asked a question and you had forwarded to the room, just want to make sure we're back forwarding, say the same. It was to do with the, uh, the language we're pretty much putting. I don't, uh, I don't have to find my notes from the last meeting or, uh, I know we have a, a few questions if you want to.
For myself?
Yeah.
Well, I think it's been, they've been discussed and, and I, I've been analyzing the, and it, it makes sense. The one, the roads that we have selected are the ones that have more infrastructure, that have a, a more, uh, need for supervision and the differential, I understand. However, there's the two factors, the, the factor is that one, we, we're now, we've canceled some of these side roads that, that branch off of that. And secondly is that what's left, the roads that we are maintaining, uh, for the, for, are continuing on with the construction, where we're reducing it even with just those roads, reducing the supervision to sixty percent. So it's, we've got less roads, we've got less supervision and, but despite having those two factors taken off, I know the, the ones that we're maintaining are the more, uh, elaborate ones, I agree to that. However, it's still sixty percent, uh, of the supervision for eighty-five percent of the cost still remaining. And that, that's essentially, but you're saying that that's, is that standard protocol? Like, when, when you're, is, and, uh, the other thing is, like, when we, we said, okay, let's, let's move ahead with the project, there was the sort of a delay, is that why, uh, what's his name? Uh, Richie? Richie got assigned elsewhere because of the, a delay that was out of our control? Like, I, I don't know.
Well, I mean, uh, we, we bid the project, uh, in twenty twenty-three, like originally in February. So, uh, you know, in February twenty twenty-three, we were planning on using Richie for, uh, for inspection in twenty twenty-four. You know, and since that time, we've, we picked up additional design projects where we've, we've needed Richie to, to, uh, complete those designs. So, um, so basically, in, uh, the last couple of years, we picked up lots of projects that we, we need those resources on. As we, we never got the go-ahead on the C A inspection on this, like we, so we allocated those resources elsewhere.
Okay. Did you have a follow-up question?
It was, uh, regarding to, uh, on the, on the change order, we sent it over, it said that, uh, you have to cost for the compaction testing with the wall for the set amounts of the municipality was to be liable for the balance. And I don't understand how that falls on to municipality. Uh, you said, I think, municipality or deep, deep instruction, instruction, something on there.
Uh, yeah, uh, the, um, there's a, there is a cost in the contract with deep, there's a fixed amount for compaction. If we go over that amount, then the, I, I think I talked to you about this, I can't reme- remember, it was an email or a conversation, and that any surplus cost over the set amount would be borne by the municipality?
So there's a compaction allowance in the, the tender. So basically, when we need compaction testing, uh, it would be used from that allowance. If there's unnecessarily high compaction testing, because the contractor isn't doing a good job, then that's borne by the contractor.
Okay, but in the contract, the way it was written, was the municipality or the contractor, as written, like, uh, in the change order, the way it was written was like, as long as we're not paying for it, I don't care, kind of thing. I, I was concerned, because I feel like that's the contractor's responsibility to warn that.
Yeah.
And there was another wording, it was highlighted in there about, uh, the monthly, monthly payment, instead of the forty-eight thousand, or the balance was, it said to be paid, uh, to be paid monthly. How much monthly?
Yeah, it was just.
So it made it look like you wanted to pay forty-eight thousand dollars a month for the change, or just the wording, and then just small little things, but it's still a contract, right?
Yeah, we can probably work on that one.
Yeah, that, that's clarification.
Yeah, so just two wording, those two wording, anyways, I don't think the municipality should have to, to be responsible for any excessive testing required that due to, I don't know, say, uh, poor, maybe poor water conditions or poor, uh, spraying material in between the F's or unpacking enough, and I don't think that's all responsible.
Yep.
Yeah, so I mean, uh, with the change order, it's just saying, uh, more or less, we were just trying to say that, uh, with the change order, we're not doing any compaction testing, more or less, is what we were just trying to say with that. With the tender that deep bid on, there's an allowance for compaction testing. If they require additional compaction testing because it's failing, then that would be borne, borne by the contractor, so. Um.
So we can change that.
Yeah, so we can change the, the wording in the, the, the contract change orders, if, uh, if that's what the municipality wants. And then, uh, for the payment, uh, basically, it's whatever time and material we accrued during that month, then that's what's built. Yeah.
And it says, it would have read like, uh, the used amount of, of the fifty-four thousand or whatever to be paid monthly, and says, says the, the amount of fifty-four thousand to be paid, comma, monthly, or something.
Yeah.
Sorry, I don't have it in front of you, but when I read it, it was very, it was, to me, it was, uh, it was like, okay, we're signing as a, as a, built that much per month, so, even though it wasn't in the tender, you know, more of the C C N, sorry.
Okay. Um, any other questions, uh, Councilor Deschamps?
I don't know, not really, just, uh, again, the, the five, the five percent is kind of sticking point for me. And again, I understand the rules that were taken weren't as, as important, but again, sixty percent of the, the labor for eighty-five percent of the cost we thought we're incurring is, if there's, I don't know, maybe we got a revisit thing, maybe something was overlooked, or I don't know.
You have any? That, that's what it is, or?
Um, so I'll do some quick math here. So on the last one I sent for the July twelfth, I had ninety dollars an hour for Richie. So that brings us to a hundred bucks an hour, so right now, Sean's at a hundred and ten. So, I don't know, I'll have to look at that one, see if there's anything we can do. But, um, on the, yeah, on the original, original contract, like we didn't, we didn't get the go-ahead on it, so we, we allotted resources elsewhere. So it's, I understand where you're coming from, but also, this, we give this, uh, you know, proposed staffing over two years ago, never got a go-ahead on it, and now you expect us to be held to it.
No.
So like, I, I do understand where you're coming from, but if, if you give us the go-ahead, then obviously, we would most definitely have to honor that. But, uh, since, since we, we didn't get permission to go ahead, we allocated staffing elsewhere. So that's, that's just where we're, we're at with the staffing.
I think, I think also the fact that we had given the go-ahead, but then there was another prolonged delay that was because, uh, it, it, I don't know, was it the bidding process?
You could have had a good portion of the project done this year, and then now next year, we're going to be subject to another five percent increase, which won't be fair, because we're going to be, well, a lot more hours should have been allocated this year if the tender process would have happened when it was supposed to, and we would have had a contractor bid on it in the more time we matter, but we're going to be on that too, so.
Yeah.
You're going to go five percent in January again?
Question?
Yes.
So if, I'm just, a question, if we were to accept the C C O number two, the change order number two, those rates would be locked in for next year?
Yeah.
But fine print was subject to change five percent, so.
I don't know if there's a five percent in that, if there were.
Yeah, we didn't put it on there, on the C C O.
Okay, so then it would be, that was, it would be the rates?
The rates would have been the same this year and next year, because it's not included, the five percent. As of today.
As of today. It's just as of March, I'm wondering what they were. Um, any, any further questions? I'll take one more round.
I'm still on the five percent. It should, like, he's saying, I calculate about a hundred and forty-three, I think, he's saying a hundred and forty-five. It is a big difference at the end of the road.
Okay, Councilor Loftus?
I'm thinking the longer that we postpone this, the longer we wait, the more it's going to cost us. And I mean, I think, yes, it's high, but we need to go ahead with this project, we need to get it started, we need to get it finished.
Okay. Yeah, I'm, uh, like, I understand, we, uh, we hadn't given approval on phase, uh, or on table three. Um, but I think that it was expected that, that approval would come when the project was, uh, you know, uh, underway. Table one and two were approved, because there was a, knowingly, a quite extensive lead time in between.
Uh, table one and two were approved, cuz there was a, knowingly a, quite extensive lead time between the, table one, two to table three. Where the provisional uh items were for the inspection. Um, that's unfortunate, there was a lot, a lot of changes along the way. Uh, thank you for coming out and trying to explain some of them and everything. I hope, uh, you know, the, the start of the project and the issues that I've already been seeing, I hope that, that's not a precursor to what. Uh, is, is to happen if the, if the sixty percent is followed. Uh, it's a big project for the municipality, so we're looking forward to having some nice roads at the end of it. Um, I, I, I'm with Counselor Loftus, like, you know, it's, at this point, we're, uh, well underway, uh, but if we're. So change order two is for King Street East, or change order one, I think, was, wasn't it?
Yep, the, number two is for Saint Joseph.
For Saint Joseph, yeah, so, uh, yeah, I don't, I don't, I don't see, uh, like the, 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 the thing is that change order. Like table two, or table three, sorry, had uh Saint Joseph Street at, was it fifty-five thousand in the past? I think it was, uh. Where was that again? Sorry, and, and it, and then that portion now went up to uh, uh, table three, Saint Joseph, yeah. It was at fifty-five and then now that one's at seventy, so it's like there, it's like the costs were all offset, right, so, yeah.
So uh, the CCOs are based off of, originally I put CCO one for the twenty twenty-five work.
Hmm.
So it was uh for all the work that they expected to complete in twenty twenty-five, and then CCO two is for twenty twenty-six.
Okay, so it's not a direct.
So it's not necessarily just only King Street and only Saint Joseph Street. It's the work that, based off their schedule, they expected to complete by the end of twenty twenty-five.
I think paving was, would be both, right?
Uh, sorry, what's that?
The, the, the pavement would go on for both next year?
Yes, yes, yeah, cuz uh, yeah, they, they likely won't be able to finish all of King Street uh this year. So it would be, they would carry on King Street next year and uh that would be included in the CCO two.
Sounds good, yeah, that explains the, this kind of swapping of the, the price a little bit too, so, thank you.
Counselor Chans, any last?
No, just uh, I, I do appreciate you coming out here and trying, I know it's uh, obviously continuing, but it's, it's definitely uh. I, I wouldn't wanna be in your shoes, like, five people asking you questions about, uh, but you understand that we, we care about uh, the service that we provide and, and the costs that everyone went through, uh, if you live up here, so. My only concern going forward, again, that just with how, how late we are starting. Uh, we know what winter does to subbase and gravel tops when there's no pavement on it, so just hoping that uh. Don't see too many, too many uh hiccups along the way in the spring, because uh, yeah.
Yeah, and my, my only recommendation to you is that on that little five percent, it should say possible. Or should, unless other changes, uh, you, you, you need to add more description on there, because when we read it. It's perceived as, okay, this is the, the quote, maybe five percent more per year, whatever. And that's where we stuck, uh, uh, and we had the problem with. And uh, I'm in agreement with what's been said by some of the counselors here. At this point, we're, we're into it, we, we can't back out of it and uh, but basically, we're, we're gonna have to move ahead. However, that, that little five percent per year should be barred, should, you should say, subject to change without notice or whatever you wanna put down there. But it, it's a little false, it, it lead, led us into false hope, let's say. That's uh, that's it for me, so. Now can I have a, we're gonna look at the, the, the change orders for number one and number two for fifty-four thousand, uh, thirty dollars. And change the order number two, seventy thousand, one hundred and thirty dollars. And we'd have to have the amendment to include the, the, the word changing in there somewhere. For um, that was mentioned by Counselor DeChance.
She put the housekeeping on previous uh items, but I don't think the contract.
For the cost portion where it says monthly?
Yeah, the monthly and the other one for the municipality or contractor to be responsible for the overdisfor different types of testing.
Yeah, if the, with those two amendments in there, or changes. How do we, do we have to vote on the change first, or no? You're doing it, okay.
Uh, it's on, well, it's on this, it's on, what page would it be? CCO number one, August twenty-six, twenty twenty-five.
Page two.
Possibly, uh, right above table one, cost, where it says monthly, uh, total cost for eighty-five four thousand. Paid as time materials, fracture work, performed by EXP monthly. I think that, yeah, you see it, yeah.
Yeah.
I, I, I understand where, I think where it's coming from is it's paid on a monthly basis, but it can be perceived as paying fifty-four thousand monthly, yeah, which would be uh.
Just, just open housekeeping, that's.
All right, so therefore can I have a mover and a seconder for this resolution? Counselor Loftus, Counselor Patis?
Moved by Counselor Loftus and seconded by Counselor Patis. Be it resolved that Council for the Corporation of the Municipality of Saint Charles authorizes EXP contract change order number one and number two. For the addition of contract administration and civil inspection services provided by EXP. For the rehabilitation of village roads, phase one and two, as follows. Change order number one, fifty-four thousand and thirty dollars. Change order number two, seventy thousand, one hundred and thirty dollars. Subject to changes discussed with Cody Mancha as, as it relates to compaction wording and payment wording.
All those in favor? Carrie, thank you very much, Cody, for coming over and helping us here. Okay, thank you. We have just a little bit of housekeeping, then we're done.
Thank uh, thank you guys for inviting me down tonight and uh, look forward to completing this project with you guys. And hopefully everything goes, goes well with us.
Yeah.
Hopefully not too many more CCNs or CCOs.
Have a good night.
Have a good evening. Okay, uh, we have a, a few bylaws, gonna have a mover and a seconder for first and second reading. Counselor LaChance, Counselor Patis?
Moved by Counselor LaChance and seconded by Counselor Patis. Be it resolved that Council for the Corporation of the Municipality of Saint Charles hereby gives first and second reading to the following bylaws. Bylaw twenty twenty-five dash thirty-eight being the bylaw to repeal bylaw twenty twenty-three dash fifty-two. And amend bylaw twenty eighteen dash forty-four bracket fees in charge of bylaw. Next, bylaw twenty twenty-five dash thirty-nine being a bylaw to establish an affordable rental housing property tax subclass.
All those in favor? Carrie, can I have a mover and a seconder for the third and final reason, uh, reading of bylaw twenty twenty-five dash thirty-eight? Uh, Counselor Loftus, Counselor Framboyes?
Moved by Counselor Loftus and seconded by Counselor LaFramboise. Be it resolved that Council for the Corporation of the Municipality of Saint Charles hereby gives third reading to and finally passes bylaw twenty twenty-five dash thirty-eight.
All those in favor? Carrie, uh, move and a seconder for the third and final reading of the bylaw twenty twenty-five dash thirty-nine? Counselor LaChance, Counselor Loftus?
Moved by Counselor LaChance and seconded by Counselor Loftus. Be it resolved that Council for the Corporation of the Municipality of Saint Charles hereby gives third reading to and finally passes bylaw twenty twenty-five dash thirty-nine.
All those in favor? Carrie, can I have a mover and a seconder to adjourn? Counselor Framboyes, Counselor Patis?
Moved by Counselor LaFramboise and seconded by Counselor Patis. Be it resolved that the special meeting of Council held September twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five be adjourned at six forty P M.
All those in favor? Carrie, meeting is adjourned.